Five thirty-one on March third at six P M. Attendance please.
Here.
David.
Here.
Lisa.
Here.
Carrie.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Maria.
Here.
And then we'll leave for that.
Yes. All right, our vision Byron Public Schools, a community of learners committed to making the world a better place. Mission is to learn, share, innovate, inspire. Priorities personalized learning and the pursuit of academic excellence. Inspire students and staff to develop their character, share their talents, and apply their learning, and maintain excellence in resource management. Any questions or discussion on the agenda items?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is approved. We'll dive right into our reports. The A and I report.
Yes, so Kelly Braun was supposed to be here to do that, but she had called and there's an illness in her family that she cannot be here tonight. So I'm going to do my best is just to give you what our A and I is about. And Dan probably knows a little bit more as well. But so one of the things that we have for, we talked about the categorical funding is, is one of the funds is achievement and integration. It is something that we work and have to propose a plan for and each year. And the plan doesn't change a whole lot. We have, there's some goals that go with the plan, but it works with Rochester. You know, there are some, you either have the eligibility is you have to be racially isolated, which has enrollment of a protected class district wide is more than twenty percent compared to the people around you that you're adjoining district with that racially isolate. So Rochester is considered racially isolated and we are joining them. So it would be programs that we would work with Rochester at times to be able to do. A lot of it has to also deal with to increase some racial and economic integration. So we do some teacher equity work is one of our goals is to by the year twenty twenty-six, hundred percent of Byron certified staff will engage and participate in network with adjoining districts and study culturally responsive and trauma-informed practices. And we did the trauma-informed practices last year. So this is kind of a two-year thing. And then reduce achievement disparities. This is where really we will really concentrate on is that each year the proficiency of our, our students who receive educational benefits for all grades tested on the state reading MCA's three through fifth will increase by two percent. And the students testing grades K through two using Fastbridge will also increase by two percent. So it's how to get extra supports to those, to those students. And then also Byron will participate, will increase participation from twenty-five percent to fifty percent for underserved student groups in our Byron career path programming. So we're trying to get students who may be underserved or maybe not have a lot of chance to do things to participate in things like C tech classes and through Rochester and so forth to be able to do that. So that's been our goals as we move forward. So again, it's really about cultural competency, careers course and teacher. We have at Byron Mills School that works with our kids. We collaborate with Rochester Public Schools and C tech. And then we reduce achievement disparities through adoption of our wonders program. So when you look at the, and what we'll do is I'm just presenting it tonight. If you have questions, email me and I'll, and I'll get those to Kelly or you can email both Kelly and I if you have questions as you go. And then we'll approve this budget coming at the next meeting. So, but this is, this year's budget for this school year. And the MCIS is what they use in middle school and high school for career planning and so forth. And then professional development, there's money for that. And then pathways, some supplies and dreams. And then last year, we started implementing at intermediate school, the wonders curriculum. It is one that goes with the science reading. It's approved by the state. And so we, we use, but it's quite a bit when you look at the curriculum and you know, it's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars or more altogether. So we're able to space out over three years using A and I because it's one of those that helps, has different levels. Again, works with the science arena is approved by the state. So they allow us to pay for that using our A and I budget. So you'll see wonders this, for this year, you'll also see wonders for next year. And then you'll see this one more time for the achievement and integration. So it helps us get, get to that curriculum for, and that will actually be a K five curriculum. Maybe one five or K five. I just know it's the elementary school curriculum, so. Really though, then each year we have to put in, here's what our, here's where we meet our goals or here's what we want to work on. Here's, and some of them could be two or three year goals. And then we get that back. And you can see it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that we get. But it's one of those, again, that's categorical that here's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, but you can only use it for certain things and for certain reasons and programs. And so we want to make sure we're, we're capitalizing on all of those this year and, and going forward. So any questions for me? I'll try to answer them, otherwise email me and I'll give them to Kelly. She would've gave a much better presentation.
How does this compare to numbers from last year? Do we know?
For salary, I mean for what we get?
Yeah.
Hundred, we get a hundred and thirty for this year.
Okay.
And it goes up to a hundred and thirty-five for right now. That was an estimate. Might be a little bit less and then we have to kind of go from there.
Oh, okay.
So, okay.
In fiscal year twenty twenty-five is this?
What's that? I'm sorry.
In fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Is that twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five year?
Yes, we're right now in FY twenty-five. Next year's FY twenty-six. It's when the, it's when the school year ends. That's the best way to remember it.
So it's the, it's the, the school year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, yep, for this year. That's what we're getting right now is here. And this is the goals that we put in and were approved for. And then this is for next year, for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Okay?
And are all of, is all of that amount provided to us via state funding?
Yes, this is through state funding.
And it's targeted, right? Okay.
Yep.
Do they have any recommendation of how to allocate those funds? Or is this a program that we have developed and we are?
We can send you the eligibility's and the reasons or the things that they want that this has to go towards.
Okay, and that's what it's.
It's kind of open, but yet it's really not. You know, you can't just go spend anything. And then what will happen is next year they'll have to redo it, but they'll probably have to work with, because if you think of anybody that's, that any district that touches with Rochester, they can be part of it. So they have to get together with them and say, here's how we're going to use this money. Because we only get a portion of what everybody else gets, that sort of thing. So that's what will happen is they'll get together and say, here's how we're going to use this money for the next two years or so.
Okay, any other questions? Turn it over to Dan for our finance update.
Here, you can drive.
Okay. Good evening. Yeah, I just have a short financial update tonight. As we said, we like to during workshop sessions, more of a, try to do more of a learning thing, teach a few things about school, Minnesota K college school finance. So now we're into our twenty-five, twenty-six budget process. As you know, the Byron School Board approved a one point six million dollars in adjustments at its last meeting in addition to the one point six million dollars the year before. So these adjustments that were made were based on what's happening in the twenty-four, twenty-five budgets as we work on the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. As we forecast and looked out, we knew we needed to make these adjustments to balance the budget. And now that that's done, finance can now incorporate these adjustments into compelling next year's budget. So we did find some things out. We're citing time for business managers last week as we got a memo from M D E telling us that they figured out what the basic funding formula will be next year. Based on the inflationary rate of two point seven four percent, they're raising the basic formula rate two hundred dollars per pupil unit. As you recall, a pupil unit is a calculation of the number of students, times a weighting and what grade they're in. They've made it very simple nowadays. K through six is weighted at one point oh and then seven through twelve is rated at one point two. So you take your number of students, throw them into the formula and gives you the number of pupil units. What does that mean to Byron, this two hundred dollars per pupil unit increase? Well, the current year right now, we have the basic formula, seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. We have two hundred and fifty, two thousand, five hundred and fifty-one pupil units. So that equals about eighteen point five seven six million dollars. Next year with the seven thousand, four eighty-one basic formula, but pupil units are going down as enrollment goes down, the two million, two thousand, five hundred and six. That's about eighteen million, seven forty-eight. It's an increase of about a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in general education aid. I know for years we went to legislature and said, this basic formula is not going up to match inflation. So they finally passed some legislation to match inflation. I've not seen the calculation of how they came up to two point seven four and how it really relates to the inflationary numbers we're looking at. But it's a good, it's a good thing that they're doing that now if we can keep our expenses at inflation also. With this decline in enrollment, we'll see our local optional revenue will decrease about thirty-two thousand dollars. Local optional revenue is seven hundred and twenty-four dollars per pupil unit. And that's similar to a referendum amount, but it's foredetermined. And I probably would think almost every district in the state uses local optional revenue. But with dropping enrollment, that will actually be a decrease in our revenue. Now, the state does have declining enrollment aid, which you probably never thought you'd ever have for a long, long time. But as enrollment goes down, they'll bring some aid back to make up for that. So that kick, that's kicking in next year at about seventy thousand. So it's kind of making up for the lost aid in enrollment. So we know that the impact of the increase in the formula, which we're all excited about, is tempered by the decrease in the district's enrollment. So as we're putting this budget together, the expense information we're going to use, obviously is staffing, our biggest expense. Staffing's going to come as from all directions, from the elementary side and from the middle school side and from the high school side. And obviously it all works differently because on the elementary side, teachers have grades. They have a number of sections in each grade. And besides the fact they're specialists, but the teachers are pretty much with the kids all day. Then they get into middle school and go to different classes. And teachers are seeing a hundred and sixty different kids every day. And in high school, the same way. So as the principals try to figure out, you know, if the class is big enough to have, gets a little, they have to combine the schedules of the students with the number of teachers they have. So as we look at that kind of staffing, it gets a little complicated. Class sizes are huge in doing your budget. And I had a great mentor that always said, always told the board and told everybody that enrollment doesn't come in these little packages. We were dropping at this point fifty-two students from last year. Not dropping them, we're, it was enrollment. Someone might say, well, there's fifty-two students. That's two teachers you have to let go of. Well, it's not all in two sections. I mean, you divide that by thirteen grades and it's barely enough to move any staff around. So it's not as simple to fund it by student, but it's not as simple to, to reduce expenses by student. We have to look at our special education needs as we look at what students are enrolling and the staffing required for that. Of course, we have to kind of guess on what inflation will be, inflationary costs. And then always a wild card is contract settlements. We have to make sure we balance our budget, but then we also have to try to figure out how to, you know, pay our employees and offer benefits. And then of course, the information from the budget adjustments was very helpful because it began to tell us where we can reduce, where we're going to reduce on each side. And then obviously with our discretionary costs. So the process at this point, just in general, the plan is to present a balanced budget. We'll, the finance staff is beginning to compile all the staff and all the other costs. Generally looking at the size of budget, I, I'll probably, I've been looking through the budget, but I'll probably just, you know, budget line by line and department by department. It shouldn't be too difficult. June second is when we'll present the preliminary budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. And that terminology is a little antiquated. We've always called it the preliminary budget that you approve in June. And then we'll run, that's our actual budget. And then we'll revise it sometime in November, December, January, around then, as you did this year. With that information, you could probably prepare some pretty good five-year financial forecasts because you're always looking ahead to see what's going on. We also will start having the books audited. And once we get the audit done, we'll know our starting point for this year. But we have to kind of guess this year at this point. And then just know, we also have to put together school nutrition budgets, community service budgets, and debt service budgets, which will also be approved. In my other districts, they were, the last one was, was very large. We actually had those budgets approved, the capital budgets and the debt service budgets. And we had those approved ahead of time so we could start working on the other ones. And also so that some of the departments could plan their spending. We'll also at some point, or in July, you'll also approve a long-term facility maintenance plan. So we'll, we'll put some dollars in for that, but the actual plan will be approved by the board in July. And that's, that's what we got for tonight, so. Let's guess.
Dan, so thank you for the update. So does it mean that you will be, you will be able personally to prepare the budget for the next fiscal year, right?
Yeah, because I, I mean, I'd be around long enough to do that, yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Or if you hire someone else, I'll drive over.
You will help them. No, we need help. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
So as we go into the negotiation, contract negotiation, this is a little bit technical. So but do you, like in the, in your budget, the way you're preparing it, do you have flexibility to adjust the numbers, the salary numbers so that we can see how changes in the contract negotiation would impact the next year's budget?
Yeah, we use a costing model that generally will give us, I mean, the budget model, I can plug numbers in and it'll change the whole thing and we'll know how we're doing. But then we get a little deeper with the costing model when we actually negotiate. Yeah, those, those conversations, you know, we, we don't get too deep into, we don't want to negotiate the contract through the budget, but it's, it's a tough thing. It's a tough thing.
As you can appreciate, given what we have gone through, right? We'll need to make sure that we understand exactly how that works, right?
Yeah, I mean, the beauty of doing a line-by-line budget, basically zero-based budget.
Yep.
You know, find out, I need to make sure that every employee is in that budget. Beauty of doing that is you can kind of see which direction to go just by making different assumptions.
Okay, and we'll, we will be able to dynamically adjust that every employee, right? Once we have whatever percent adjustment we're going to end up with.
Look, I'm.
For the contract negotiation.
Yeah.
So for this next year, and then you also mentioned the, the five-year plan.
Yeah, and those, yeah, generally it's just a matter of saying what, what should we assume, but.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And would it be, is it the personnel committee that does the negotiations?
Yes.
Okay. So then you would be, you guys would be overseeing the numbers and make sure that the right things are plugged in.
And then always a report to the board in a closed meeting about the status as it moves through the process.
Okay. Dan, I have just a question on the, the special education needs. Is that something separate from, is that a different pool of money from the state versus?
No, it is somewhat, the special ed is, is, we get special education aid, but it's not enough to cover the educational cost of all the special ed students. So it creates what's called a special education cross-up of the aid.
Okay.
And what the state had done three, four years ago was started another aid called special education cross-up is the aid also, but that isn't enough to cover it either, but it's lowered the gap. Now, that's going to go up another six percent in twenty-six, twenty-seven, that aid. But no, we, we figured into the tolls, general fund budget is not categorical in that sense, but then we're able to get reimbursed for sixty percent of the costs. But it's kind of always kind of a guessing game on special education aid because the tuitions we pay to other districts for students that are ours, but they go to different districts for special ed and also like, what's yours called?
Zed. Zed.
Those tuitions come off the aid you get.
Because our students that go to Zed, they get the money there from?
They charge us tuition.
Okay.
They, they don't collect basic formula revenue. So it's, it's not a per student funding for special ed students. Every special ed student also, we receive general education, basic formula money for. But when it's all said and done, the state will reimburse us for about sixty percent of our personnel costs for special ed. And that's called special education aid.
Thank you, Dan.
One question on the declining enrollment aid. Is that anything that we have to do as a district?
No, it's just part of the state formula.
Pops up into somebody's screen and they say, okay, Byron's declining by X percentage?
Yeah, well, I plug in the, the enrollments for this year and last, this year and next year. Then on it is, oh, you're going down here some money.
Okay.
It, that will roll on a, on a sliding scale, so eventually it goes down, but yeah.
And that's something that we get every year if there's declining enrollment?
Yes.
I hadn't heard about it before, so.
Thankfully.
Seventy thousand sounds pretty good.
You really don't want it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not that money, but you're not going for that. You're going the other, you want to go the other way.
Here's an example. If you take the fifty-two ADMs you're losing, I keep saying losing, that are declining, then multiply it by, say you get ten thousand per student. You get your basic, you get your L O R and some other aids. You know, it was that five hundred thousand dollars. If the declining enrollment aid is seventy thousand.
Yep.
I'd rather have the five hundred than.
Yes. Any other questions or discussion for Dan? We'll move on to discussion item A, action on the release of two, one, two, two, and probationary staff for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Yes, so this one here is what you approved last week for the amount of staff that would be, this one is, it doesn't include all the, you know, the salary, or not the salaries, but the different supply budgets. This is strictly for, for staff now. So these are the ones who are tier one, tier two, or probationary staff that will be reduced for next year. There is, it is a resolution. You can probably just start from the second page here and, because the names will be on top. And then what will happen is we'll read this and then there'll be a motion and a second. And then there'll be a letter, the sample letter is down below. And then that letter will be put together tomorrow and, and then delivered tomorrow. Again, these are for the probationary, tier one, tier two, or probationary teachers. Any questions with this? All right, so if you could read the resolution on the second page.
So just where it says the name, put teaching contract as named above.
Where, the where as?
Yes. Yep.
Whereas the teaching contract, as described above, as a tier one, tier two, or probationary teacher in, in independent school district five thirty-one, be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number five thirty-one that pursuant to Minnesota law, that teaching contract of staff names tier one and tier two of independent school district number five thirty-one is hereby terminated at the close of the current twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Be it further resolved, that the written notice be sent to said teacher regarding termination and non-renewal of their contract provided by law. And that said, notice shall be subsequent, substantially the following form.
You don't have to read the form, but that's the other that'll be going out.
Okay.
So any discussion questions or entertain a motion to approve? And this is everything that's already approved. It's just assigning the names to it.
And make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? Take a roll call vote.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Carrie? Aye. Lisa? Aye. David?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Nadine?
Aye.
Carrie's will move on to action on the resolution of proposing placement of continuing contract, tenured teacher on unrequested leave of absence.
So this is different because it is a tenured teacher who has a continuing contract. And it means they've been in our district or in Minnesota for, in the same district for more than three years and has that in part of the seniority list. Unfortunately, we do not have enough sections in the area that they teach in order to have a full-time position for them. So they're placed on what's called unrequested leave of absence for a full one point oh. We, and then they would be offered, but if they want to take those smaller sections, I think there's only four of the twelve, they certainly can do so. If not, even if they do, they're still put on unrequested leave of absence for two years. So if that position becomes a full-time position over the next two years, then we go back to that person. And in this case, it's Jason Bubala, who's a Spanish teacher. And we would say, we're going back, we're adding these sections back. They're yours, do you want them? And then he, he has a, he can move right in without interviews or anything like that for the next two years. However, the difference here is though, that the state says we put it, we propose it tonight. And then there's, he has twenty, he'll be given the letter tomorrow. And then he has fourteen days if he wants to have a hearing about, maybe doesn't agree with seniority list or whatever, something like that. He has fourteen days to come back and say he wants a hearing. So on here, on this proposal, there's a date that we would put, or on his letter, there would be a date that we put that when the proposal hearing would be. If we don't hear from him, then on the twenty-fourth, we will prove, they'll do the final approval of his U L A at that time. So any questions with that? It's different than the other one where you just did, so. So this one you probably should read here, so.
Be it resolved to?
So, but, but you'll have to, yeah, so you can do it with be it resolved.
Be it resolved by the school board of independent school district five thirty-one as follows, that is proposed that Jason Bubala continuing contract tenured teacher of said district be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or benefits at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year effective August, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Said action is taken in accordance with the district master agreement pursuant to Minnesota statute one twenty-two A dash forty subdivision ten upon the grounds described in said statute and which are specifically as followed, financial limitations. Be it further resolved, that a notice of. Be it further resolved that a notice of proposed placement on requested leave together with a copy of this resolution be forwarded to said teacher and that an affidavit of the same be placed in the teacher's personnel file with a copy of notice and resolution.
All right, any questions or discussion on this resolution?
So is this one of the high school teachers?
Yes.
And that's, is that the only one, or are we going to go through a list?
Oh, you, right now, this is the only one that's an unrequested leave of absence, and I'll explain in a second the other one that would have been, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Looking for a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
I move to approve the resolution as presented.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Kelly? Aye. Nadine?
Aye.
I just, before we move forward, just want to say there was, there would have been one more unrequested leave of absence, and that would have been for a licensed school nurse position as what was reduced last week, but because of a resignation that happened since then, that has changed that position or the need, so we don't have to, at this point, reduce an LSN because of the resignation, so. So that way, that's when you look up there and say, I don't see where that LSN was reduced because the resignation kind of took that away, so.
A resignation, can we ask where?
That's one of the LSNs. One of the LSNs resigned in the last week. So we don't have to reduce one, they've reduced already, so.
Okay. Moving on to discussion on the district operational plan.
Yep, so I want to bring this forward. I just did the part where it's for the school board. We have each year, right around springtime, we start looking at next year already for the operation, district operational plan. For this year, if you remember, we had a conversation and hopefully you had a chance to look through this and read this, but there were some board priorities, and one of them was the student and staff mental health, one of them was financial stability, and then it shows, it'll show some of those things that we were working on for this year, and one of them is also the profile of a graduate, and then the fourth was facilities. You wanted to stay with four, or the previous board wanted to stay with four for this school year. So what happens is the board will have their district operation plan, their goals, your goals for starting for next school year. This again is from July on forward, and so I want you, right now, you can ask questions about, but what I would like us to do is think about, or maybe have a small discussion about what some of those board priorities will be. We can kind of fill in, you can go through me, I can put those in there, and I come back on the twenty-fourth, we can talk through them again, and then get your goals, so that we can then tell the administrators, here's what the board goals are, and if there's some that they can use in their goals, because they're going to be meeting with their staff, their leadership teams in their buildings, and coming up with their goals for next year, the district operation plan. Sometimes it's nice to be able to go off of what the board is, it doesn't necessarily have to be, but you know, they, but then you will get a chance to see them in May. We try to come back to May or June, we try to do it in May, but so that you could approve the overall district operation goals for next year. And it just, it's kind of that North Star, kind of gives you the guide as you move forward next year and to reaching some goals. Again, my suggestion is that you will continue to learn about the profile of a graduate, and you let the administrators keep driving that bus. You know, I will be honest, you know, that was the goal, and even last year, and then when things happened last spring, the focus has been, as even with you, totally financial, right, and so forth. And so they're still working, but they've been working every day inside their buildings about still doing the profile of a graduate. I think they're doing a great job. I think next year, they just, as you are, some of you are new, continue to have them come in, present on what they're doing for the profile of graduate, let you ask questions. They're still working on some of those things that we started last year and moving forward. My recommendation to the board is that you continue to look at two things. One is the financial stability of this, of this district moving forward, and that that would be your number one, your number one goal. Again, that's just my recommendation. The other recommendation that I have is because some of you are new, and you're going to have a new superintendent and a new finance director, that kind of the whole leadership part is new, and you're working on your handbook, that you're really working on your, the board development throughout next year as well, and how do you run meetings and so forth? You have to kind of start slow to go fast, and I think I'm recommending that this board, you know, go slow at this point. Let the administrators take care of the things that are happening in the school, let them report back to you, you guys questions, but keep your focus on the finances, especially with that operating referendum coming back in November, and then also having a new superintendent, a new finance director, you're really going to have to kind of gel a little bit, right? And that would be my, that's just my recommendation, but you guys can have a discussion where you think you might want to go for next year. And then again, you can bring that discussion a little bit now, and then you can send things to me, and I can put together a draft, and we can have this discussion at the next meeting on the twenty-fourth. Jeremy and I can kind of put a draft together, not me, Jeremy and I will help them and put something together, so, yeah, Nadine?
It would be great to introduce some of those presentations when we have a bit of a downtime in between budget conversations and other important things. This is also very important, so it would be great to start bringing those forward, those presentations, whenever we have a relatively less intense meeting.
Right, and I would say for this year, and what we've done in the past, if you remember, that we start in the spring, or in the fall, excuse me, so we usually start in October, and we usually have one or two buildings come in, give their presentation. At each meeting, we have a ten to fifteen man presentation, kind of space them out. And then at the year, at the end of the year, if people want to hear something specific, then we invite people back. But at the end of the year, you have budgets to worry about, you have the A and I budget presentation, you have other things at the end of the year, and you get your board reports from the board members, you know, at the end of each quarter about what they're doing. But if you, but we always try to bring, have them come in, talk about the profile of a graduate that they're doing, and then maybe highlighting a program or highlighting something to you, you know, that's what we would do. But if you want, if you want to hear about something between now and the end of May or June, let me know, and I can try to, I'm hoping that things kind of start slowing down here, but there's something else that you want to hear about. I know that we have a couple other presentations, technology and food service and everything coming up in the next few meetings, next couple meetings, and so, but if you want to hear something in particular, let me know. Otherwise, I wait till the fall and have them talk about what they're going to be working on, so.
And then you also mentioned that by the end of this quarter, so March, end of March, we will get reports.
Yeah, usually I think it's at the March one or April. I think it's the board reports for the principals. I think it's that, I think it's in April that you get it. That's at the?
Beginning of April?
The April seventh meeting, you know, where you get the, you get the reports from each one and you read through them. So the end of the quarter is around spring break, I believe, so, and then they usually talk about how the quarter went and then what to expect for fourth quarter.
Thank you.
Now, when we did the board priorities, what was that, two years ago, three years ago?
No, this was, this was a year.
Well, you, with?
But remember, we, we had like, you know, charts up on the wall, and we were writing stuff, wasn't that at our?
That was at, that was one, with the retreat last?
Oh, that's right. You had?
Yes, we had the person from CISO, no, this was a person from CISO, a person from CISO, and he came and spoke, and then talked about how to look at those. I can pull those up again, but again, those may be something that, again, that you may want to think about as where exactly we're at. At that point, we, we weren't at the financial situation that we were, so, and you have different board members and?
So when does that conversation take place then, whether these are going to be our top four still?
So we're starting the conversation now.
Okay, and then we?
And then, then May twenty-fourth, Jeremy and I can come, if you have any ideas, or if you want to talk about them now, like what would you like to work on?
March twenty-fourth?
I'm sorry, March twenty-fourth, when, at our next meeting, we'll come back with the rough draft of this, and then we'll finalize it and vote on it, and then I can let the admin team know. And then they're starting the conversation with their leadership teams now about what they want their operation plan to look like for next, for next year.
Well, and when coming with these, you know, financial stability was our number two, and it trumped everything, but I think the correct word is stability now. I don't know that stability was the right word for a long time there. But my thought is we have to also include in there the mental health, because it was our number one priority, it took a backseat, and now we have to figure out how to do more with less. And so that's, my opinion is, you know, those have to be, but we're focused more on the stability of like, always getting the board notes that have, this is how much we got in the bank account, this is how much is here and there, knowing that kind of stuff, and knowing, you know, Dan, I think the number, what is, a hundred and fifty thousand that we're roughly saving in expenditures comparatively, is that sound like right?
Yep.
Okay, you know, just being on top of that, and then finding out how we can find creative ways to maintain the mental health, that's my two cents.
Yeah, and I still want to keep, are you like wanting to flip flop number one and two? So number one?
Personally, no, but that's up to the board. I feel very good after Julie and Dan have been here. The admin staff and the district office is phenomenal and has, has learned an exponential amount above where they probably should have to know, but you know, like I said, my, my thought is, is the focus on the stability of the financials, which is, from our view as a board, twenty thousand feet, just let us know we're doing okay and how we can help, and we'll get out of the way. But mental health, I think is, and I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think that's important to the, to the majority of us.
I was thinking about that too, because you mentioned less is more now, and that's kind of one of the things where we are dealing with less, with a lot more.
Yep.
And how do we?
And I would just, yeah, so when you remember that you are at the governance level, and that you are at the twenty thousand foot view, or wherever, how many thousand feet up, so when you say mental health, means that you would want the administration, the superintendents over to report on where the data on mental health and where, where our schools are seeing it, and how best you as a board can support them, not for you to come up with the programs and stuff to be able to put in there, but if there's money available and where, and you have money, where does it go? If you want to go to that area, that would be a focus, but you just have to remember that, you know, you're at the larger view, so you're not really, you kind of said, and look at how, what programs we can put in all this, that would be more for the administrators, but you can, how, what do you, what can you do as a board to support the administrators as they, as we do have some reductions in mental health and are seeing, and some different, have to do things a little bit differently, for them to report to you to make sure that we are still getting the services, you know, and so forth, and then they can report how they're dealing with the changes and that. That I would just kind of put that up there, and then how best you can support them.
Okay, so kind of along the lines of that, so since we're all parents in the community, some of us are connected to mental health organizations and stuff like that, so is it appropriate to ever have a conversation with a principal saying, oh, here's something and it's free, you might want to look into it? I mean, is that appropriate or not at all?
Or, or send it to me, or the new superintendent, and we can send that forward and put that out there, we can have a discussion at the leadership team meeting, which for me are held weekly right now, and as you head into next year, if there's programs, I'd send it to the new superintendent and let them distribute that information, and then be a resource that if somebody has questions, that they can give you a call at that point. You can always send them the information and say FYI, you can do that. I'm just trying to make it simple for you instead of having to go out and see four or five administrators to get it done, right? We can have that conversation, and you can have a conversation with the one person, the superintendent, and they can disseminate that information, and if they have, need more information, they will come back to you.
All right.
And I will say just from a business standpoint, like one, one line of communication cleans up a whole lot of stuff.
I'm sorry, I'm new to this process, and maybe I'm not understanding the purpose of this document, but this is, so priorities, right? You show your priorities, you wrote with your pocketbook, right? So in this round of budget cuts, to me, the message was that we are prioritizing the profile of the student compared to mental health. So if that's the case, should we put the profile of the student in the first place and mental health on the third place after the financial stability?
For a question.
It makes sense, but I don't want to do that.
No one wants to do it, but that, that would be honest, in my opinion. Again, this is something that we can change prioritization once we have an opportunity to support the mental health better than what we're planning to do right now.
And that's what this conversation is about, is to create that.
Okay.
To literally have that conversation. What is most important to this board?
Right now, it's not mental health, in my opinion.
Our opinion, that is that it is, but it's not really, it doesn't come down to our own opinion.
It took a backseat to the financial.
No, exactly.
We don't shy away from that, yeah.
So we're still prioritizing the profile of the student, and that's the goal for us to attract or maintain the population of students, right? Financial stability, and then mental health. Okay.
I guess I kind of look at it a little bit different. These were our priorities for this year.
Correct.
Unfortunately, from an outside perspective as well, it maybe didn't fall the way you guys planned when it was made. I think mental health is extremely important and should be a priority, and while maybe we didn't get to it last year because finances did kind of take over, I think it's important that we as a board come together and implement and really push to make it a priority in large part. We got rid of an LSN that raised a lot of community speaking up that, hey, we need to do what's best for the kids. Now, if we're putting mental health on the third, I don't know if that's going to be best for the students, and we have to be thinking of them. Mental health goes a long ways, they'll have better education, they just overall do better as an individual, so I think that needs to stay a priority, and we need to figure out how to get there with the budget reductions and everything.
And I'm guilty, we keep saying students, this is also consideration for the staff as well, because a lot of them are taking on overloads and admin level two of extras. How do we? How do we make sure that there's not burnout, and it's not just in the school, it's every business in the, in the world, from our very, very good and talented people, but there's no right answer.
Well, and as a board, how do we support the staff and, you know, their own mental health? That's one of the things that we don't really expound on very often. I mean, what can we do? What?
Well, and as a board, I mean, that's the key achievement target, develop programs for students and staff to participate in around the prevention of stress and mental health issues. So we would create our target and then turn it over to the admin staff and say, this is what we want you to focus on, and like you said, Lisa, to, hey, here's something I found, this may help, but lean on the leadership and the admin teams to be able to say, this is what we are seeing and finding that works well in this building, it might be different in this building. So I don't know if that answers your question, but from our standpoint, I think it's, it's letting them know that, right?
That it would be that this is a priority for them, it would be that maybe some of those presentations that are given are more regular about what mental health is happening, you know, that you're asking, you're asking the new superintendent for updates on what's happening in mental health so that you can ask more questions, maybe it's just put in front of the board and keep bringing it forward about what's happening in our buildings, people be able to ask questions, and then you can give some direction, hey, can we think more about in this area? But then you, you're right, you give it back to the superintendent and the admin team to come up that there's, if the board doesn't think that there's enough, or we need, are you needed in a different way, then you can, you know, present that, or say, here's, have we thought about this? Keep giving, feeding them ideas and seeing if they can do it, but doing it a way through that process. But for you as a board, it's more of keeping, asking the questions and keeping the topic in front of you as a board, you know, and having the superintendent and administrators keep. and, you know, and having the superintendent and administrators keep presenting that. Just like you, they come in and present the profile of graduate and they may have to come in and do a ten minute presentation on what did they do in mental health this month? You know, or, you know, how do you present it to the community more to your students and staff? Is there something that the board can do or allocate resources or time or whatever? Figure out a way for some mental health time for students or staff. Not that you have to figure it out, but you would say, we want the administrators to work on this. And then that's what you do because you want to put that out there and then, you know, present again any information or new stuff that you're thinking where you think as a board, there still needs to be support. And then you can help figure out how to get that support for them, let them do the work.
And then it goes on to like the budget, balance the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six. Develop processes for tracking of expenditures and revenue. We'll check and check. So what do we need to update there? Same thing like Nadia mentioned with the profile of a graduate. Okay, what's being done? What do we add? If this is a focus, how can we guide our admin team to make sure that we are finding out what's going on and then tweak as we go? And facilities, develop a five-year projection model in regards to facility needs. You know, I think Hazel really focused there. I don't know that that's as much of a priority because.
Not at the time because you're not growing.
Yeah.
And also that there is a facilities committee that will be looking at that as well along with the new finance director and so forth. But I do, and I don't know, maybe Dan would say something different, but even at a high level, you know, keep really in mind that there's going to be a lot of decisions yet by this board regarding the financial. You know, where you go, especially if the operating referendum does not pass. And some of those unfunded mandates do come from the state, like that we're thinking they might, right? And so there's going to be a lot of decisions moving forward. So even if it's to really educate yourselves as a board when it comes to the financial part, to better educate yourself as a board so that if those happen, you can make decisions because you may have to make decisions on the fly next year in some ways. Because when you look at that revised budget, if you know that you did pass the operating referendum, you do a revised budget after that. You know, there may be things that come up for next year. We cut one point six to try to give a cushion, but if there ends up being more, something like that, then you're going to have to really concentrate still until you feel that stability is there and you're moving out of that and you're at towards eight percent or close to eight percent. That's got to be one of the main focus of this board moving forward. And then, like I said, being new and just working on your, and having new leadership, working on that board, your relation together as a group moving forward is going to be important, especially if you don't pass the operating referendum. You're going to have to come together as a group to be able to do that. The next level will be even harder than it was this level.
Yeah, because what was the proposed impact? It was one point nine million, is that right? If it was approved, it wasn't at a one point nine?
Yeah, one point nine million, be around two million dollars a year that you would get from an operating. And again, it all depends, it's around that, it was that for this year, but now you have, remember it's per student.
Yep, that's right.
Per student, so you'd have to take a look at what your need is and I think that's what we'll, Dan will be presenting for the future because there's always that and facilities, like I said, that will take, there'll be things like phones and roofs and things that need to be contemplated. You know, that all would put pressure on the budget. So I guess that I, mental health, don't get me wrong, I'm great, you know, I think it's great that the board would keep that as out in front of them in conversations, but I know that the admin team and the staff are really concerned with that as well. And so, but you have more control over the budget issues in some ways than the mental health issues and so forth. I just want to keep, have you keep that in mind and tell you are at that eight percent and you have an operating referendum, you're still, it's, you know, it'll be harder in the future. So I think that's what, in my opinion, that's what I think this board and this district should be moving to. You first, because you can think of all the mental health you want, but if you don't have any funds and you know, and you're really struggling with that, then it's hard to move forward that way. So, you know, that's why, for me, financial, the financial stability is still needed and should be your number one priority and then either mental health or, but remember that the mental health and the profile of graduate, you know, working to those are what the admin team is doing, so.
And if I'm not mistaken, we had three priorities, we added a fourth, is that?
Yeah, but you can have two priorities.
Just so you guys know.
You can have two priorities, three priorities, you don't have, you can have something totally different than what's up there. If you think that there's something else that needs to be watched or monitored for next year, but, you know, that's up to you.
And it's a three-year goal, right?
Can be, doesn't have to be. You can have a short-term goal. You can have, because it's year by year, you're just going to go back and revisit and say, did we reach it? Do we need to keep working on it, you know, but it could be a three-year goal, it could be a always goal with financial stability or your mental health. That's almost an always thing unless you have, but you could have a small, specific goal that you're going to want to reach, you know, in a year, more or less. Again, the more goals you have, the more diversified your thoughts are going to be and less focused maybe. And right now I still think you have to be pretty focused for a while.
So I guess I would ask if the board members would send me an email with priorities listed so that way we can compile where they sit for everybody and we'll know.
And remember, send it individual to Jeremy.
Yes. Okay, any other questions or discussion? All right, we'll move on to our board handbook, pages fourteen through seventeen.
Yes, so this is one of those things you guys started and at the organizational meetings or at our retreats, I think it's a good idea. We left off on page fourteen and we talked about doing the learning the job and the next few pages. Any, first one is learning from board colleagues. Workshops, retreats.
I would jump to the informal meetings, work with the superintendent, schedule informal meetings with key staff members to discuss specific areas of interest. It's not that none of us can go directly to that person, but it's like we just meant like that chain of command, the streamlining of every bit of communication because they may have in conversations about something and Lisa, for example, goes in and has the exact same conversation and then I go in and have the exact same conversation. It's not efficient use of time for our admin for us. It's just coordinating so that everybody knows what's going on and we're not monopolizing our admin staff time. And then mentorship was the next one I was going to talk about. It says, each new board member will be paired with an experienced member. This mentor will be a seasoned board member. I would recommend that we change that to your mentor will be a more experienced board member.
Than you.
Yeah.
I mean, not you.
We don't have a, I would call Matt Priggy a seasoned board member. And even in life, we're all learning every day, so even as an experienced board member, we're all taking in new things and, you know, two years ago, I thought a very, in retrospect, a very small issue was big. Now I can appreciate a very large issue at hand. But before that, I wouldn't have known how to deal with it. I think, you know, just changing that wording to mentorship is important, but also taking advantage of the mentorship, mentee relationship. And it can be as simple as a text or an email, hey, I got this question, what do you think? And that.
And there is that link here to the new board member orientation year at a glance, so that's great for them to mentor and work with or make sure that who's ever new has that so that they kind of see what's happening and so.
Yeah, I would suggest if we're going to keep this in there, that we actually do this then.
Yeah.
You know, and assign mentors and mentees.
It was kind of like, and I can't speak for previous boards, but it was kind of like, when I came on, I was surrounded by amazing people that had done it a long time and I was the only rookie. And so I had this like, I don't know, village and I didn't know how to teach anybody how to do this when we had new board members. So, but this, what's it called, the new board member orientation year at a glance, I think is going to be huge, but you're right. It's going to be in here, we then have to follow up on it and personally, I know I have to hold myself accountable for it. Let's see, I know when you and I were talking about this stuff or kind of getting the stuff ready for the retreat this year, that was one of the things both of us said we wish we had.
Yep.
Before we were board members.
Or when you were brand new.
Right.
Yeah.
But I do hope our whole board has that comfortable feeling that you could call, email, text any of us. Because we're going to like, we're going to learn as much from the new board members because you see things with a different set of eyes. And that's how we need to see everything as a board.
Do you presently have that? I mean, you're working with Alicia, right? David's working with Kelly and Carrie, are you, or who's working with Nadia?
We haven't really.
I mean, it's really a go-to person to go to and then as a mentor, you, especially if you see something that we've talked about before here and now it's going to be happening later on and you want to give that person a kind of heads up, here's what was talked about or here's what to expect or here's something to look at, you know, then you have someone to do that. So it doesn't have to be a huge thing, but I think it is if you follow some of that and you just have somebody to go to. And then that mentor does step out and help them whenever keeps checking in, I think that that's important too, so. And you have more than one mentor as well, so, you know, but.
May we turn back to the conversation about the communication between board members and the staff, teaching staff? I, so do we have to go through the administration to schedule appointments with the staff members?
No, I think it's not an expectation, I think it's a courtesy, but also.
I think that means.
Checking with their boss to make sure that they would be available.
So how do we, so how do we make sure that we maintain or develop some form of communication where we can directly go to the members of staff if we have questions, right? I don't want to engage ten more people to schedule a meeting, a thirty minutes appointment with somebody. It would be wasting everybody's time. In the same time, I understand that as a board member, me asking for a appointment with somebody would be maybe perceived as something that they cannot refuse, right? So how do we establish a process that kind of is open for, for an opportunity for us to go direct but also in a respectful fashion that maintains everybody's ability to, if they do not have time or if they're not willing for some reason to say no?
I, this is just me speaking, I don't think anybody feels like they have to meet with a board member.
Right.
I would feel bad if that was the case. No, it's not a matter of not, right, not being able to contact it, it is, but where does the process come to? We are a governance body and not a managerial body.
Right, but as we're learning through the process and in order, again, as a board member in other organizations, right? When I have a question, when I have a specific question that requires certain set of expertise that is not available to people here, right? For example, I would go directly to the person who has that expertise and I would ask them the question that I have. So how do I develop the same mechanism here where I can go and ask whatever questions I need to have responses to in order to do my job, right? How do I have this process, but at the same time, yes, not create something that can get out of hand?
I'm not sure I have an answer for that.
My struggle with that would be if you have a question and I have the exact same question and Lisa has the exact same question and Jeremy has the exact same question, now we've wasted two hours of that admin's time.
Not necessarily, maybe that then if it's the same question, right? Maybe I can just email them that this is the question that I want to talk to you about, okay? And that if that's really the same question or along the lines of what you will ask tomorrow, right? Then that person can say, okay, well, I've already spoken with Nadia about that, she can, you know, keep you updated on this.
Feel like we're acting rogue and not as a team at that part.
So we're kind of putting the staff in the middle.
Yes, so what's the right approach here?
Remember earlier, I think it's in this part that we talked about last time. The procedure is you remember that you are governance and you hire the superintendent to do the managerial, be the CEO. Not that you couldn't go talk to someone, but you have positional power now as a school board member. And, yeah, you would hope that people wouldn't be nervous, if a school board member gave a call, but there might be staff members that would go right to their admins that will, I just got a call from the school board member, what's this about? I don't know, should I be worried, what should I say? You know, they worry about saying the wrong thing, you know, I'm just trying to tell you that in a lot of cases that could be compared to calling either the admin or the superintendent. You should really talk, go through superintendent, say, hey, I have a question, I don't think you can answer it. I'd like to go talk to so-and-so, can you set it up? And so can I email him some things, can you let him know? Because then I would let them know, if you're going to come in and visit and, because I've heard of board members now going into and emailing a teacher, say, can I come visit with you without when the admin or the superintendent know that they're coming in? You know, again, some staff are okay with it, some staff are not. And at the same time, the superintendent should be the one that has an idea of what the questions are with the board as well and where they're thinking so they can help guide that as well. Not that you can't go do, go talk to them, but you certainly want to make sure it's a fine line. And I get you want your question, but there's a fine line between governance and between, you know, another, I, I, about the managerial part, because there are things that you're aware of or you might get emails about and it might be a question regarding the staff member or how a procedure was done and you want to go find out how that procedure was done so that you can have a better idea. Well, if you go right to that staff member, that's in question, I worry about some of those things. And so you really should contact the superintendent, say, can I reach out to so-and-so, here's my questions? And then, you know, we can just give a heads up and say, so-and-so, you know, this teacher, you're going to be getting an email because they have this question, I don't know the answer, could you please give them the answer? That's a lot less stressful and everyone is now on board than just reaching out to that staff member without your superintendent knowing. I think that's the important part.
Okay.
You know, so.
Thank you, that's helpful. So may I summarize, so that, so the process would be if I have a question to a specific member of staff, I would send an email to you first with my question.
Yes.
And with an ask to talk to that person, right?
Yep.
Okay, and then you will connect me with that person, but it will kind of go through you, okay? So this would solve the problem that where everyone, different board members have the same question.
Correct.
Okay, but it also still has, like this process will still also have an ability for us to have direct access to the staff if we have specific questions. Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Yep, that would be the process that I would prefer and I think any superintendent here would want to do that as well. So they know what's going on, they can help and just give the heads up to the teacher. They are the experts and they probably have a better answer than I would give, I would like to give them the heads up that they're coming. And definitely, if you want to go into a school, you know, just to show up all of a sudden, coming in to talk to you, that can be a little frightening for some teachers just because of your positional power, not because you're frightening, just because you're a school board member, so.
Do we need to make changes in the, in the board handbook according to what Jill discussed?
It already says that.
Okay.
Well, it will, yeah, we'll double check that that's the way it reads. Um, and, cause right now, it may just be to visit a school, that, that's.
This is informal meetings.
So we'll also make sure it says that, and I'll make the change that you mentioned about the more experienced and take out season.
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else on, and remember, all of us have, um, what's the right, editing rights on this? So if you see something that you wanna include or, or update, um, you can just post it on there, and then, excuse me, as we're reviewing it, then, um, we can discuss that. Let's see. Yeah, I really don't have any other, probably stop at the board governance model.
Yeah, um, so we went down to this area, and then we would stop here at the individual board. Um, excuse me, um, working as a, as a board.
Okay.
I think that would be the next part, so.
Any other questions or, or updates to the handbook pages fourteen to seventeen?
The next month, we'll, I'll send out what pages, Jeremy, you can, what pages to look at for next month, to see if there's any changes. And we'll redo that at the next meeting in, in, uh, April, April seventh meeting.
Okay, um, discussion on the LPN/RN posting.
Yes, so after last week, and, um, what we would like to do is, uh, as part of our support staff contract, is to add the category of LPN/RN. Um, I have looked at, and I sent out to you, um, before last week, what other districts have done for salary ranges, for LPNs and RNs who are working in their school office, health, health offices and so forth. They're not the LSNs, but they are working in the school office. This way, we can, uh, recover some, some MA billing at times, and plus, we, um, want to put the priority on getting more highly, highly qualified people, not that our health aides aren't, but when they've gone and been licensed as an LPN/RN, that just comes with the territory being more educated, be able to do more things as well. So, um, my recommendation, we'll take a vote on it at the next meeting and approve it, is to add a category in the support staff with the health aide, but add another line for LPN/RN. The range would be, our present health aide range is seventeen forty to twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, we would have their range at, starting at twenty-two dollars, and going up to twenty-seven seventy-five, um, and, and start from there, and that's kind of our range of where we would start people. And, um, again, they're not doing the LSN work, um, they are, you know, meeting in the health office, and we would assign them to them. The reason why we bring that up now is because we do have a, a present LPN working in our health office, so we could move that person to it, uh, maybe for the rest of this year, give a, a bump in salary for that. Um, and, and then we could do some MA billing to, to cover that up, and, or to help cover those costs. Then, um, what we talked about doing, the admin team talked about after spring break or so, that we would post then for an LPN or an RN. Uh, remember, we're, we, we could, um, replace two people for the LSN, we would need to. So next year's LSN would be housed at the primary schools, is the idea, and then have one person in each building, so we would have four. One health aide at the high school, she does a great job, and, and so forth, so we, you know, she would still be at the high school, and then, uh, we have right now the LPN at the intermediate school, and then hire and go out for an LPN with a preference, to work in the school health office with a preference of an LPN or RN, and see if there's anybody that even now in the spring says, yeah, I can, and they can start planning that. We, you know, we're males backyard, and so other school districts around us are able to find RNs and LPNs for that same range. If they are a mom whose children are in school and wants to work same, same days and so forth, it's a great opportunity for them to do that, and be part of that. So we thought we would post it to see if there would be any takers at, at this time, and, and so we could start planning for next year, and people then could feel confident that who we have in our, in our schools, instead of waiting till summer. We would try to do it now, if we can't find anything, or find anybody to, to apply, um, you know, we would then post it, you know, again. And we would, again, go out for, with a preference of an LPN or RN, give us some time.
So this would be a separate line item in the contract, the support staff contract, right?
Yes, they would, yes. And I'll be coming to you, I, I will be working with, um, the LSN who will be here next year, and, and, and has been working on, cause we used to have an LPN and RN job description. And so working on a new job description for that position, um, and working with the LSN to look it over, and present that to you at the next meeting, and then approve that part, uh, the support staff contract, and that category, so that we could move people and then go out for that hiring, cause we have that, we have that positions and that salary range. So anything that you, any questions or anything that you would like to do differently, or? Yeah, the salary range is open too, but that's about where everyone else was following in that, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Move on to the, uh, update on the trap team fundraiser?
Yep, so I know that the last work session we had, we, uh, specifically the coach came and talked to you about the trap team fundraiser, and, um, I know there were some questions, and we're gonna be bringing it back. Uh, he has, he had talked to our lawyer, talked to other trap teams, um, and then looked at the timing and so forth, and has decided not to do the fundraiser at this time. Um, he may come back to you with, uh, you know, next year, or another time, and add some more information, but he just thought with what needed to be done in this spring, and as busy as they get with things happen, that they just didn't have time to put it together, so I'm just updating you that he is pulling that request off, and you don't have to vote on it and move it forward, okay?
Sounds good. Uh, update on our finance posting.
So right now, we, uh, as of today, we had, um, three people apply, um, none of which have school, um, finance experience, and, um, one has started, one of those three has started the application, but then finished and then closed, so we reopened it back up today, um, to see and put it into field for right now, so people can still apply for it. One of them, um, I do not recommend bringing forward from his information. The other two, um, if he, if the one re-appeals or submits it, um, we'll be having Dan look over those resumes, especially if they don't have school experience. Dan said that he would be available at times, if it's raining out, he can't get outside, um, to come in and work with, um, uh, the person, you know, and coach and so forth, but, uh, we're gonna have Dan's expertise give us an idea. Otherwise, um, we'll see if people bring, come forward, otherwise, we'll repost it again. Uh, probably not till April, after April first, when the superintendent is hired, but we'll see, we'll keep watching, see if anybody applies, and if we have to bring a couple people in there, we will, and so forth, but that's kind of a wrap at this point, so.
All right, discussion about having students on the school board and the referendum committee.
Yes, so, um, Alicia had brought, and if you're listening to the Friday chats that MSBA puts out, if you get a chance, even if you can't watch, uh, listen live or watch it live, please go on at some point over the weekend or final week to watch it, it's very informational. One of the things that's coming in front of the legislature is that someone proposed a bill that all school boards need to have a student representative on the school board. Um, and there was a particular way that they get on the school board. Many districts do have a student rep on the school board. Each district that does it, does it, gets, uh, they elect the students a different way, you know, and have them, they don't, it's not that people are against it, they just don't wanna be told you have to do it this way, and, you know, and not this way, and, um, some already have their traditions. Byron used to have a, before COVID, or right on COVID time, had a student representative on, on the school board. And again, they would, they would have to come, um, to the, the third Monday meeting, the actual school board meeting, um, unless you would want them also to be here on a work, you know, a work meeting, um, like a work session to add input. Otherwise, they would be at the board meeting part, they would give an update, a student update about what's happening in schools. It would be somebody that could, if you want a student, um, input, you could reach out to them, and here's your student input, um, that sort of thing. Usually, and we do have a policy, it's policy two oh two point one that talks about it, and that they are actually elected, or chosen by the student council, the high school student council. And then they go back and talk to the student council about what's on the board. Um, we brought this forward a couple years ago. I know Jeremy was on the board, right, I think when he got on, I don't think anybody else was, and I, um, we, we didn't bring it forward to the board, because, uh, I, I asked Malia to see what it would be like at the high school, and she went to the student council, and at the time, no one, uh, and that's since they're so busy, especially the student council kids who are in a lot of activities and do a lot of things, to be able to commit to two nights a month, or even one night a month and do that. Now, you can't have an alternate, but, um, Alicia heard that, and we might have to do it. Your board, you know, this district, all districts might have to do, but at this time, you don't have to. But if you want to pursue it, um, I can ask Malia to pursue it again with the student council, um, and see if there would be somebody, but you certainly don't want a different student each time. They do have to be trained, they do have to know what they can and can't say, those sort of things. Um, so, but you could have one main person and one alternate if they can't make it. So, a discussion to think about, um, any, any thoughts about the school board part?
I think it'd be nice to have the student input on the school board, I, I don't know that, uh, the referendum committee is the right fit.
That was the next thing, so she also, so that was what, that's not on the chat room, the referendum committee is for this district. The chat room is about the legislature, and that's the school board, um, students, so. But the referendum, she also asked about having a person, a student on the referendum steering committee and so forth. When we talked at the steering committee the last time, we're having another meeting on the, on the twelfth, the talk was that, um, when Abe Rotomeyer went to that session on referendums, they talked about having people at different generations, or different age groups as you go up, so you get the different perspectives. I worry about having, I worry about having students on there, only because now you're kind of promoting, that's also kind of the steering committee, or the group that will go out and try to get those votes, and, uh, if you start trying to incorporate students in that, and people will say, really, you're going to have students go out? And, I mean, some will do it, but you don't want to be out there having, think, and, you know, I, it's one thing for alumni, is, um, unless it's students voting age, you know, it's hard to have somebody, that's just my thought, right, so.
I, I think it's worth having Ms. Schro to reach out, just to see if there's an interest on the school board.
Yeah, I mean, they may not have the time, and it may not fly again, and if it's not.
I'm sorry, I just have to excuse for one second.
I think it would be, I think that we have, um, an ear from the inside of the school, and perspective, cause you know, it's gonna be a hundred percent way different than what we would, you know, come out here, so.
That's right.
It's our inside.
Yep.
And it would be a great opportunity for somebody who's following, you know, maybe somebody who likes government, or somebody who just likes management, or, or just, you know, board policies altogether.
Yeah, I think, uh, it, it's a great resume builder for them, so I think it would be advantageous. Yeah, I, I think, uh, we'll just ask Dr. Gubek to send an email, and, yep.
Two ladies have an opinion?
I think that would be good for the school board, um, but again, I don't wanna, I want the individual or the student that is on it to truly want, I don't wanna make it feel like, hey, this is mandatory, kind of, I just want that flexibility, great money.
It sounds like it may become mandatory at some point?
Still trying to push people on.
I'm sorry about that, so.
Nope, nope, so we would just, uh, I think as a group suggest that reach out to, to see if anyone was interested.
Okay.
For the school board part, not the.
And, well, we'll, I'll, I'll ask how, when they choose student council members, if it's for next year? You know, if it's this fall, or if it's the spring, and then they can have a conversation with, with who's ever gonna be on the school board once they form it, and then, and so it might not be something that they do right now, I don't know when they choose that, but, so, okay?
We'll move on to reviewing the enrollment for twenty-five, twenty-six.
So, um, this is what Dan brought up the other, um, earlier, just wanted to show you, at, at, right now, we are up to a hundred and twenty-five students who are enrolled. We have four open enroll families who haven't, um, enrolled yet, and we, um, have one that we think may be, um, coming yet, so that would just, uh, one thirty, um, but again, we don't know, any of those will decide to leave at some point. Usually, the kindergarters don't leave as much unless their family decides to move, but right now, we do have a hundred and twenty-five enrolled at the kindergarten level. But as you can see though, again, we are, um, graduating about a hundred and seventy-five, and having a hundred and twenty-five come in, you know, and we don't have a lot of students right now who have applied for open enrollment. That would be this, this lane, or this one right here, you've approved them all, um, and, and, uh, they've all registered. The ones who, um, have applied, um, have registered, right?
Except for, it was four kindergarters this morning, but one dropped off because of the age.
Just, just, oh, it's because of the age, cause they were wanting to come in, but they were too young. So, but you can kinda see, we, we, in the past, we've had as many as fifty students open enroll, in grades one through twelve, and we don't have that many at this point, so we'll just keep promoting our schools and all of our programs, and we'll see if that changes throughout the summer, and we hope that many don't leave, so, okay?
All right, we'll do the first reading of the policies.
First one is acceptance of gifts, this just talks about that, that school district can accept, accept gifts, and, um, those are the donations that you approve at board, board meetings. It also says that, I, it's, you're in charge of, uh, to sole authority to determine whether a gift or any precondition, condition, limitation can be put on, on those gifts and so forth. That's why you do approve them, because if it's from someone that you, um, or it's for something that you would not approve or don't think is right for the school district, you can deny that as well, so. Um, any questions with that? Okay. The next one is, um, school board meeting minutes, so, um, after each school board meeting, then Ann puts those together, and, and runs them by me, and then, um, then we'll send them out, and, and then put them on our website for. Now, um, again, they are just overview type minutes, they're, now, they don't get into details and so forth, those are what's on the board agenda, people can look at, but it's like, here's what was discussed, here's who voted, here's who's, or made a motion, here's a second, and how, and how they were voted on, so. But we do have to have minutes and records moving forward, and they also talk about any closed meetings, and, um, how do you, um, record those, and when do you record them, and when they can be used, and so forth, so. Any questions? And again, there isn't any changes these, there's just some statute number changes and so forth, so, in the ones that we're talking about. Um, instructional services, this talks about special education, and that we have, um, from children birth through age six. Um, we do have, uh, ways to test them and so forth, and so, um, and we do have, uh, education, uh, services for our families moving forward, you know, and, and we will work with Zed. Zed does the birth to three evaluations. Any questions? The next one is the legal staff, so the school district just talks that we are our own entity. The school district is a separate legal entity, and it's coordinated with, but not as subordinate to the county or to any other municipality in its territory. So the school board is its own, own. So the school board is its own, own place and its own group. And talks about funds and you can see there's a change of statute, but it talks about how to go out for fundraising funds, selling property if we have any property and then entering contracts and so forth with, with other institutions or, or groups that you can do so. Any questions with those? And then three oh one is school district administration. Says that we have to have a school district administration and, and that even though you have a superintendent who kind of officially supervises them, that you will, can ask them to do things and ask questions of them. They are still, you know, leaders in our, in our district. And, and school board shall seek specific recommendations or background information, professional advice from them as administrators and so forth, but we do have school, school administrators. Any questions? Again, pretty straightforward ones. And the last one is religion. So this one is about promoting religion or doing negative, or saying negative things about a religion. That is not permissible, but we do recognize that, you know, religion has a spot and has where we would have, this actually mentioned like a school choir, you know, concert. Although that is religious music, we will have some things around school for holidays at times which are religious based, but it's something that the students are, are part of. And we're not, we're not necessarily promoting it. We are talking about religions in different classes, but it's not something that we promote throughout, throughout our buildings or curriculum, but we do talk about it. Any questions? Okay. So we'll just put those on to approve. If you, do we have other questions? Please let me know. So, okay?
Recap of the listening session. Okay. We were going to mention.
Oh, yes. So I, I wanted to recommend, and you can let Jeremy know if you think differently, but now that the reductions are done and sometimes this room can be hard with people moving and doing all these things around, that we would move back to starting in April. So the April seventh meeting, that we would move back to the district office for meetings. Just a little bit more conducive and easier to have a meeting in that, in that realm. So we would, doing that starting back in April. So if you have a concern about that, let Jeremy know. Otherwise, we'll plan on doing that starting April seventh.
Okay. If nothing else, then we'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned.